Good evening. If anybody plans to speak, we have a sign up sheet. We do not have public comment cards this time, but we will next time. But if anybody wants to speak, we have a signed this sign up sheet. And remember, there's a two-minute time limit.
Folks are kind of gathering out here, and once we're ready, I think we're about ready. Okay. Sheriff Owens is supposed to be here. He had an event that was planned for me in front of him, because he wanted to see if he was. I haven't seen him. I don't think he's seen him, but we're going to start here in just a minute. Whenever you just happen to see him, whether it was vacation or... Yeah, and then...
...
No, it's a...
Red means on.
Red means on, okay.
We just might have the... We have the wrong line.
Test.
Test. Yeah, we're good? All right?
Let's do it.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call and order the second transitional meeting of the City of Mabelton.
Woo! Y'all can clap.
Testing.
Thank you for being here this evening. Madam Clerk, if you would mind, the roll call, please.
Yes. The Honorable Michael Owens, Mayor.
Present.
The Honorable Ron Davis, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Dami Oladapo, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Keisha Jeffcoat, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable Patrice Alk, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable T.J. Ferguson, District Five.
Present.
The Honorable Deborah Herlen, District Six.
Present.
We have our quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we could have Pastor Boyd come to the invocation, please.
Good afternoon. May we bow our heads for a word of prayer, and I invite you to pray in your faith tradition as I pray in mine. Father, we thank you for this day, for this great privilege we have to be together. We do not take for granted any day that we have air to breathe and life in our body. We do thank you for that. We're grateful for this opportunity to gather as a new City of Mabelton to share the things that will help us to grow, to be the best that we can be, to live up to our potential, both individually and collectively. We do pray for all of our city council members, for the confidence that they have in us as a people, but also for the people and the confidence that we have in their leadership. We ask your grace upon us this night. May we be both effective and efficient with our time, so that we accomplish all that we put our mind to and our hands to, and that it be for your glory. We ask all these things now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. If we could, please stand. And Councilwoman Jeffcoat, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Madam Clerk, before we move to the approval of the agenda, we do have one invited person, our Sheriff Craig Owens, who would like to say a word to you.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. So, let me first say, good evening. Mr. Mayor, councilmen and women, thank you for the invite today. I just want to take a few moments to say, welcome to the Southside of County, which is where y'all are from most of the way, anyway. And it's such a pleasure to be in front of you now. I just wanted to say hello and let you know that Cobb Sheriff's Office is here to support the new city, as we do every other city in Cobb County, and especially this new city, because I actually live in the new city. So, I do have another vested interest in it as well. So, Sheriff's Office will be providing support services for the city as they continue to grow and to become great. Our Sheriff's Office will be at all your meetings to provide security, and any other thing you need, we will be providing it for you. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to come by and speak to y'all this evening. I'll be hanging around for a little while longer to know what's going on in my city. And again, I want to say hello to everyone. Again, thanks for coming out, and thank you again for allowing me to come out and speak. Thank you. So, this afternoon, I want to catch my South Cobb residence off by guard. Had the opportunity today to make a new hire, and I think it's important to tell the city, since you're here, I have a new hire. So, I heard a new Chief of Staff will be starting Sunday. His name is Mr. David Jones, and he's right back in the back. He'll be the new Chief of Staff for the Sheriff's Office. So, if you get opportunities to speak and say hello, welcome him to Sheriff's Office, and he's also a resident of Cobb County as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no changes. Mayor, do you have any changes, or is the agenda acceptable?
Do not.
We need a motion.
A motion to approve it.
I second. Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We have an approved agenda. You can move forward.
Okay, our next item is public comment. I have spoken to many of you already. There's a two-minute time limit. We normally have public comment cards to fill out, but for this meeting, we do have a sign up sheet. I have people who have signed up already. If anybody did not know that, needs to sign up, let me know right now. Okay, I'm going to start calling names, and remember, there's a two-minute time limit, and the mayor and council do not answer and have dialogue with you, because this is a business meeting. We have to get to the business matters of the city, so we can't make it a long town hall, public comment session. So, the first person who signed the sign up sheet was Ben Mold.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm so delighted and so happy to see that this area now becomes a city. So, to the Honorable Mayor and all the council members, I want to appreciate what you did in the election to get in here. I've been a resident of Osteel since 1997, just right before the Olympics, and I've been living in the same area down on Wade Road. Now, I brought these as proof. This is 20 years ago that I was awarded these. Please pass it down. 20 years ago, when we started from the Parents Teachers Association of Bryan Elementary School. We were fighting for the growth and development of this area, because most of the facilities that you see today were not here then. I was awarded that certificate in 2003, so that's 20 years ago. And I'm so happy and blessed to see the growth and the development. I raised two boys that I was blessed with, and they are family members now. I'm a grandpa now, have two grandkids. My elder son was in the fourth grade at Bryan. The younger one just started elementary school, first grade. Both of them are young men now. I'm so proud of them, but I thank God for the grace and blessing on me. I know the things I've done in this area to bring this community to what it is today, because when we were young kids, I used to drive them all the way to East Cobb to take swimming lessons, because we didn't have these facilities here. That's a long way. So, for me to be blessed to see this, I am so blessed. And I'm a retired engineer.
Time's up. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Quick question, Mr. Mold. What district are you in?
It's District One. Sorry, I didn't call it out. District One. Thank you. We have Angela Nguyen, District Two.
Hello, my name is Angela Nguyen, and I reside in District... Thank you, thank you. Hello, my name is Angela Nguyen, and I reside in District Two. And I'm here tonight to request the Mayor, Michael Owens, to file the emergency moratorium on evictions in the City of Mabelton. The moratorium to be at least 90 days, so that the city council can review eviction proceedings and provide solutions to stop evicting black families, especially with children. Especially with children. The City of Mabelton will have the most eviction that takes place in Cobb County. Please save our children. Please save our children. Please save our children. Thank you.
We have Momonique Lester, District Two, and then after Momonique, there's Jasmine Lester.
Honorable Mayor Owens and Honorable City Council. Today, my name... Let me say my name. Hello, my name is Monique Lester, and I reside in District Two. And I am here tonight to request to Mayor, Michael Owens, to file an emergency moratorium on evictions in the City of Mabelton. The moratorium to be at least 90 days, so that the city council can review evictions, proceedings, and provide solutions to stop evicting black families, especially with children. The City of Mabelton will have the most eviction that takes place in Cobb County. Please save our children. Thank you for listening, and thank you for responding, Mr. Owens. I think I talked to you before you became mayor, and I told you that all of us deserve a good place to stay, and I think, I hope you continue to hold up to your word, that we will.
Thank you. Does Jasmine Lester want to speak? After Jasmine, there's Monica Delancey, if she wants to come to the front.
Yes, if you want to sign up, just come over here.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Lester, and I reside in District Two. And I'm here tonight to request to Mayor, Michael Owens, to file an emergency moratorium on evictions in the City of Mabelton. For it to be at least 90 days, so that the city council can review evictions proceedings and provide solutions to stop evicting black families, especially with children. The City of Mabelton will have the most evictions to take place in Cobb County. Please save our children. Thank you for listening. Have a nice day.
I had called Monica Delancey.
Good evening, Monica Delancey, District Two. The City of Mabelton will have the most evictions for Cobb County. District Two will lead the evictions, followed by District Six. So, therefore, Mayor, Michael Owens, we are requesting that you file an emergency moratorium, eviction moratorium, so that you can review these eviction proceedings and find out why is it that Cobb County, on Thursdays and Fridays, see 300 people a week, and most of them are black women with children, that would be evicted. So, therefore, I would like for you to request an emergency moratorium to speak with Judge Murphy about this, to discuss with Chairwoman Lisa Cupid, because if you're talking about saving our children and making sure that we have a safe place to call home, the first thing you must do, as a city, is establish a way to find out to stop evicting our families. This is extremely important. We have the most... The AJC did a story about apartment complexes in Cobb County. 32 of those apartment complexes are in Cobb County, but however, 11 of them are in the city limits of Mabelton. The oldest apartments are in District Two. Some of these apartments, the landlords refusing to fix the apartments. They have apartments that are abandoned. Children are playing in vacant apartments, and then these landlords are filing retaliation evictions where people speak up. So, therefore, I ask you again to file an emergency moratorium eviction to save our black families. Save our children. Thank you very much.
Trey Hutchins. And then we have Lee Miller after Trey.
Good evening, City Council. Trey Hutchins, District Three. Cobb County School District Board of Education, Post Three. And so, I just want to give you a quick education update. School is out. School is out. School is out. We had the privilege of graduating seniors at South Cobb High School today, and tomorrow, we will graduate seniors at Pebblebrook High School. We want to thank you for honoring our valedictorian and salutatorians this evening. We really appreciate that. In addition to that, I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson for attending the South Cobb High School Baccalaureate Service, and also Councilwoman Keisha Jeffcoat for attending Pebblebrook High School's Baccalaureate Service this last Sunday. Cobb County School District has approved our annual budget, and I just want to let you know and the citizens know that we do have a small rollback in the milage of .2, so you will see some relief. Some relief. So, we just want to make sure that we put that out there. And again, thank you for honoring our students, and we do have two new principals in the Mabelton area. One principal retired from Riverside Elementary, and she's being replaced with Principal Shayna Klinkskill from Nickajack Elementary School, and so she'll start June 1st. And then we also have a new principal at Sanders Elementary, which is in the most southern part of Mabelton, and she's... The new principal there will be Tiffany Jackson. So, in the near future, once everyone gets situated from their transitions over the summer, we will have a meet and greet with city council and all of our principals here in the Mabelton area. Thank you.
Lee Miller. And then after Lee Miller is Joyce Steele, and they're from District Four.
Good evening, everyone. Reference is made to the Agenda Item caption, "Resolution Authorizing Tax Anticipation Note Bids, Etc." Tax anticipation notes are not unusual, and they are generally held as lawful. Interest rates are currently high and could increase more before loan arrangements could be made. Moreover, the state of finances in general appear to be more unstable than at any time in anyone's recollection. The fact that tax anticipation notes are legal and even customary does not necessarily mean it's a good idea to obligate the residents of Mabelton to potentially honor us debentures on unfavorable terms to enable expenditures for which funding mechanisms are as yet unrealized, especially in such difficult financial conditions. One of the primary misgivings of people regarding the formation of a city government is that it become yet another tax and spend engine. The consequences of bad financial decisions are stuff of cautionary proverbs. I ask the present officials to think well on it. Thank you.
Joyce Steele, District Four.
Hello. Hello, my name is Joyce Steele, and I'm from District Four, and I wanted to start off by saying, congratulations on a great inauguration. That was a very nice ceremony, nicely done, and I was glad I was able to participate. Last time you... The first meeting that you had, I came up, and most of the folks in the room had already left, and one of the concerns that I raised was about communications and how I had found out the last minute of the day of, that we were having that meeting last go around. I wanted to say thank you once again, because I did get notification, actually twice this time, in plenty of time to be able to make appropriate plans, to be able to come to the meeting. So, again, I want to thank you for hearing and then being so quick to respond. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I would imagine other folks in the room would probably appreciate that as well, being notified and enough time to come if we wanted to come. And then last, I just wanted to say, how can we assist? You know, I know you'll probably have folks who are going to come up, maybe not tonight, but in other meetings where they're not happy, and they want to, you know, tell you about things that, you know, they're not happy about. I may share that with you, but I also then want to say, but what can we as citizens do to assist? So, if you let us know how we can assist you, then that'll help you assist us. Again, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate you.
The last person to sign up is Jeff Pageant, District Four.
Well, I don't have no script, so I just talk tea off the hip here. I'm a homeowner here in Mabelton, been raised here most of my life, and I just, you know, I'm excited about this new part of Mabelton. It's a new venture, a new adventure, because, man, the way it was, it was just spinning wheels. Just spinning wheels, and things was getting run down over the years. You know, I should have somebody that's been living here, see it for myself. And now, we've got a chance now to build this community. And I get out, you know, I get out and volunteer every weekend cleaning up trash. I mean, it's not glamorous, but that's what we do, because it needs it here in this District Four and this community. Me and... Me and several others in here, like Barry Criss, you know, David... David, Robin, there's several of us get out there, and Patty. But, you know, we get out there and clean trash up because we care about our community. You know, it's not, like I said, it's not glamorous, but it's kind of fun, you know? You meet new neighbors and, you know, and stuff like that, so. Oh, there's Ms. Carolyn, she gets out here too. I didn't see her over. But, you know, I just, you know, I'm excited about the new growth and I look forward to the schools, this, you know, the, you know, the better, you know, just advancing the schools some. I'm kind of getting involved in that some now. And just if I can do anything from y'all, from the friends of Mableton part, please let me know, I'll be able to help y'all. Because, you know, that's what we do, and we're here to help y'all and just see if we can make the best out of this.
That's all that signed up, and thank you all. You did a great job. I'm very impressed. Thank you. And now we'll move to the agenda. The mayor has some recognitions and items.
Yep, thank you, Madam Clerk. I think we will start with the proclamation proclaiming the month of May as National Military Appreciation Month. If you are a veteran, would you mind standing, please?
I'm going to read this, the proclamation. Whereas for generations, the freedom and security enjoyed by the citizens of the United States are the direct result of the continued vigilance and service of United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. Whereas the sacrifices of those who served, those currently serving, and the family members who support them have preserved the liberties that have enriched our cities, our state, and this nation, making it unique in the world community. Whereas the city of Mableton contributes significantly to the Georgia's military and veteran presence, which has a total economic impact of over twenty billion dollars annually in the state. Whereas Georgia is home to over seven hundred fifty thousand veterans and over a hundred fifty-five thousand total active duty service members, National Guardsmen, and Reservists. Whereas in nineteen ninety-nine, the United States Congress officially proclaimed May as National Military Appreciation Month, encouraging all citizens to honor the current and former U.S. Armed Forces members, their families, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas the month of May is selected for this display of patriotism because of during this month, we celebrate the victory in Europe, known as VE Day, Military Spouses Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, National Day of Prayer, and Memorial Day. And whereas on this month throughout the year, the city of Mableton citizens express our gratitude and commitment to all American service members, veterans, their families, who have dedicated their lives in defense of our freedoms. Now, therefore, it be resolved by virtue and authority invested in me as mayor of the city of Mableton, I, Michael Owens, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Military Appreciation Month in our city of Mableton and encourage all citizens to recognize this observance.
And Mayor Owens has some recognitions.
As, thank you, Clerk. As our school board member mentioned, school is out, so we do have some recognitions. And we wanted to take a moment to congratulate several of our fine, fantastic students who've just graduated. So congratulations to the South Cobb High School class of two thousand twenty-three valedictorian, Ms. Crystal Oleka. She will be attending University of, or Emory University and majoring in Biology and Global Congratulations to the South Cobb High School class of two thousand twenty-three salutatorian, Mr. Chinazi Ani Yonko Kia. Tried my best with that one. He'll be attending Duke University and will be majoring in Neuroscience. Now to our other high school, Pebblebrook. Congratulations to Pebblebrook High School class of two thousand twenty-three valedictorian, Ms. Maria De La Luz Badios. She will be attending Georgia Tech. And lastly, congratulations to the Pebblebrook class of two thousand twenty-three salutatorian, Ms. Yazat Ramos Gonzalez. She will be attending Oglethorpe University.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we're going to consider old business, which is the first minutes out of the city of Mableton transitional meetings. It was the May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three special called Transitional City Council Meeting Minutes. And I will need a motion from the council, or if there are any corrections, please advise.
Our motion to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
Second, Councilwoman Jeffcoat, and seconded by Councilwoman Ock.
Need a vote?
Yep. So to approve the minutes from the old business, everyone in favor, say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, we have approval of the last city council meetings.
Thank you. The next item of business is under new business, TNA, first read of our first ordinance of the city, and a very important ordinance, it's the ethics ordinance. And our attorney will explain what that ordinance is all about.
So Mayor and Council, just because this is the first ordinance that you may adopt, I would just like to give you a preference as to what your ordinance process is. And pursuant to your charter, you're required to have two reads for all ordinances unless it's an emergency ordinance. So this ordinance would require two reads. That would mean that you would look at it tonight, you would give me any comments, feedback to incorporate, and then we would transition the ordinance pursuant to your direction and feedback to a form at the second read that it's anticipated you'll be more comfortable adopting. And even if there are more, even if there is more feedback and more commentary at the second read, you can defer it to a third read, or you can adopt it at the second read pursuant to certain changes that you would articulate and put in the minutes at the second read. But I guess the main point is, is that unless it's an emergency ordinance, you cannot adopt any ordinance upon first read pursuant to your charter. Now, this particular ordinance, it is a, it's part of a process to get certified by the Georgia Municipal Association. And it's a certification as a city, as a certified city of ethics. And what they ask is, they ask that you adopt a resolution adhering to their five ethical principles, and the resolution is the action item that's after this action item. And that resolution just basically states that you agree to adhere to their five principles. After you adopt that resolution, you would then, assuming that you adopt the resolution, we would then give notice to GMA that you are applying for that certification, that the resolution has been approved. We'd give them a copy of the resolution, and then they would give feedback and they would assist in any capacity that's requested to help you model the ordinance if needed. And then upon adoption, you would become a certified city of ethics and you would be listed on their website as having that designation, and you would also be adopted. I mean, you would also be recognized at their annual convention as just being a certified city of ethics. Now, the form of this ordinance, it is basically a copy and paste of GMA's recommendation. You have some options. So pursuant to your charter, your charter allows you to, you have what is called a default position with respect to boards and committees. And that default position is, these are the terms of your boards and your committees, with the exception, unless it says otherwise, by your charter or law. And the laws that would say otherwise are three particular laws, and that would be federal law, state law, or local law. Your local laws being your ordinances, and then state law just being statutory law, and the federal law just being federal laws and regulations. So what that means is, is that you can adopt a ordinance that goes outside of those boundaries. It's, I think it's line six sixty-one of the charter that allows you to do that. If there is a state regulation, you can go outside of those boundaries. For example, when you get to the point where you're creating development authorities, perhaps, you'll see that the state law has certain composition requirements. So of course, you would follow state law instead of that particular section. And then if there's a board that's established pursuant to federal law as a condition of receiving some type of federal entitlement or funding, then, so your charter just gives you the flexibility. So the form that I have in is just what's recommended by GMA. It's just to get you on the fast track to get your certification. Now, I have received feedback as to some changes, so it's not clear to me whether you want to just stay with the default position under your charter. I have heard from multiple members of council as to whether you're going to stay under your default position under your charter, or whether you will accept the recommendations of GMA. So I guess if you can give me direction tonight, that would help, just to see if you're in a consensus as to how you would like this model moving forward. And then if you can, if you look in the folders that I gave you, if you want to know what the complete options are, I've put a copy of the sample ethics ordinance, because there are multiple places where they do give you alternatives. Now, I think with respect to the composition, you would probably have to reject all three recommendations of GMA, which you're completely entitled to do. Your charter gives you the full authority to do that. And GMA, I'm pretty certain, actually, I'm confident, if you reject those recommendations as with respect to composition, they will have no issue with that, particularly because your charter says that this is the default position, so they would never go against you just sticking with the default position of your charter, I don't believe. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, if you could discuss this amongst yourselves and then just kind of give me further direction as to what changes may need to be implemented.
So I'm just going to jump out there and start this conversation. Attorney, you made some comments about the sample ordinance that you have and the different options that we have within GMA, and how we can effectively create a ethics board, ethics commission, and those sorts of things within the sample ethics ordinance that you've given us. My biggest thing is making sure that whatever is in the charter is what we go forward with, and what are the different options that we have based on that? Because what we've talked about and what we've put together in our current ordinance speaks to three members of a commission. Our charter, though, speaks about seven members of a commission based on districts. So can we kind of talk to that, to how we might either take that step or take a different step?
Yeah, absolutely. So you are correct. GMA proposes three scenarios, and all three scenarios involve going outside of your charter as far as what your charter default position is. So you would have to reject all three, which I said, you're fully legally authorized to do that. So if you went outside, if you went outside of GMA's recommendation, which I think I've spoken to several of you, and it appeared that a lot of you were comfortable just sticking with what your charter says. But just to let you know what your charter says, I'll read it to you. Okay, here it goes. So it says, except as otherwise provided by this charter or by law, each board, commission, or authority shall consist of seven members with one member being appointed by each member of the city council and the mayor. Members appointed by the mayor shall reside anywhere within the corporate limits of the city, but a member appointed by a council member shall reside within the district of the council member who appointed such member. So if you collectively agree, then I can take out everything that GMA has and just put that provision instead. And like I said, GMA, I'm almost ninety-nine point nine percent certain will give you no, absolutely no pushback on that.
And just to further that question, so could you, four citizens of Mableton, explain what it is that this ethics committee is responsible for?
Essentially, just making sure the officials are held accountable, making sure that they adhere to just the state law, their, so there's, essentially, when you put this in place, so I'm not going to say necessarily state law, because I'd have to read what GMA has, but GMA has a list of conditions that they would like you to adhere to. And if you violate any of those conditions, like for example, I actually have the model ordinance in front of me. Well, I just had it. Okay, here we go. Like, for example, I'll give you some of those. Like, it says, no city official shall use city facilities, personnel, equipment for private purposes, except to the extent that those are lawfully available to the public. So of course, you can use city equipment to have a birthday party, reserving the facility just like the public could for private purposes. But it just says that you would have to, if it's used for private purposes, it would have to be at the same level that you allow the general public to use it for private purposes, too. Another example, it says, a city official shall not use his or her position in any way to coerce or give the appearance of coercing another person to provide a financial benefit. The city shall not order any goods or services without prior authorization for such expenditure. The city shall not attempt to unduly influence the outcome of a case before the municipal court. So there's a whole list of activities that GMA has put together, and the board essentially would just be enforcing these. So if they see any elected official engaged in conduct that violates these principles, they would be allowed to file a complaint with the city clerk, and then the complaint would therefore go through a process where the citizen would be allowed to speak, to say why they feel this has been violated. The elected official or any official would be allowed to respond back and say what their response is, and then the board would ultimately render a recommendation to the council, and then the council would render a determination based on that recommendation.
Thank you. So, Madam Attorney, I wanted to back up just a little bit. When we talk about GMA, this Georgia Municipal Association, correct?
Yes, Georgia Municipal Association, that is correct.
Who has been guiding three, four hundred cities across the state and ensuring that they have the guidelines set up to ensure that we all do the right things. So the city of ethics and the ethics ordinance was something that I brought to the table because I wanted to make sure that we start this city off with ordinances and laws that ensure that we're all doing the right things for the right reasons. Right? So I think we're all in agreement that the ordinance, the ordinance, the resolution, and to become a city of ethics is something that we all agree upon and something that we all want. I think that the question that's, the only outstanding question was around the formation, or at least for me, the formation or the composition of the board, summarizing again that the, our charter states that, gives a default position of having seven, whereas GMA, through three different alternatives, listed three.
Correct.
And I actually did some looking, I found that several cities use three, Marietta, Fayetteville, Decatur, didn't find any that used seven, which I thought was interesting. And I don't know if we have an understanding on why GMA has specifically suggested three versus five, or seven, or nine. Do you have any information related to that?
Just as a lawyer, practicing local government law for the time, the length of time that I've practiced, I have suspicion as to why they did that, but, so I don't speculate. I can ask them directly, because it's very clear from GMA's ordinance, proposed ordinance, that they do recommend three, because every alternative that they give you is three. So I can ask, assuming that you approve the resolution that accompanies this, I can ask them and see if they can provide you additional guidance on that.
Okay. And as follow-up to that, this first reading, we obviously have an opportunity to change.
Oh, absolutely. And if there's no dispute tonight over switching it to what your charter, because I've spoken to multiple people who would prefer that, so if there's no dispute tonight, then you don't even need to have a motion because we can't adopt this tonight.
We can't adopt tonight.
Yeah, so you would just need to tell me. And if there is a dispute, then I would ask that you vote, because obviously, we would need what the bodies, what the consensus is. But if there's no dispute, I can easily just incorporate that for next read, as well as any other comments that you have.
Okay. Where do you guys stand?
I have a question, Councilwoman Keisha Jeffcoat, District Three. And specifically as it relates to, they should just say we adopt the position, the default position that's in the charter, and we approve the ordinance. At any point, are we able to modify that if we see that it doesn't work for us?
Yeah, absolutely. So you can modify, you can either modify it by passing an ordinance, which So you can modify, you can either modify it by passing an ordinance, which, at the local level, ordinance, ordinances are your local laws. Ordinance is synonymous of law. You can modify it that way. If you want to do, if you want to keep the board for just a time period and then modify your charter, you can do that, too. Because I have noticed that your charter is a little bit different as far as board composition with, than any other city in Cobb County. Like, you actually are, have a unique board composition relative. I peeked at all the chart, I mean, all the charters of Smyrna, Acworth, Marietta, Kennesaw, and you are alone with the, with the format of your charter. So I mean, that is something, I wouldn't recommend amending it anytime soon, because for you to understand what you would need to amend it to, obviously, you would need to have a period of operation and experience with your boards and with what your collective preferences are, so that way you can best mold it. So, but you do have the ability to answer your question to either amend it by law or amend it by amending your charter in the future.
Can you have a discussion?
I guess so. For a little bit of clarity, so you're saying if we were to take a GMA option of one of these three options that are mentioned, we would have to amend our charter?
No, you would not have to amend your charter. You would just have to adopt an ordinance, because you would essentially have to adopt a law, which is what your ordinance is, just saying that, that, you know, this is, this will be the composition for this particular board.
Just to get some clarification really quickly, I think the councilwoman of Latifah, District 2, the, the main difference here is the three members that GMA is recommending versus the seven in the charter. And I just wanted to confirm that if we go with three or seven, neither of these volunteers are getting paid for being on the committee, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's not a matter of, you know, we need to cut costs or anything like that?
No, that you, you would reimburse them for reasonable expenses. Like, for example, if you sent them to training and there was a cost to that, you could either pay it upfront or reimburse them, but you cannot provide them with any level of compensation for their service.
Okay.
Like, as far as a salary or whatnot.
Okay. And if we opt to choose either three members or seven members, it would still fall within the requirements of the charter?
Yes, that's correct.
Of the options mentioned in GMA for the, for the three-member board, I liked Alternative C. the best, because it gave us a pool of seven, which is kind of in line with the charter, gives everyone an option to give an appointee. Only three would serve. They would be picked at random from a listing of qualified citizens, and they would serve at that point for two years, which seemed like the most fair, and it would be up to both our appointees and a little bit of luck.
Yeah, I didn't see in our charter where there was like a term limit for anyone serving on the ethics board, unless I missed it. Is there, is there an actual term limit? It shows how the ethics board, or a board, would be configured, but I didn't see where there would be a term limit.
Yeah, I don't remember either. I'm just peeking at it before I tell you definitively, because it's not that long of a section. I just want to peek at it. Because there is a term limit that's, that's within the model ordinance.
It just says prescribed by ordinance.
Yeah. Due to the ordinance.
It's just by prescribed by ordinance. There isn't any term limit specifically mentioned in the charter.
Yeah, I don't see any, any limit within, within your charter, but within the ordinance, the term limit is...
Two years.
It's two years, yeah.
Two years, okay.
Yeah, with the GMA's Option C, yeah.
Okay.
Which is, I will, well, I spoke with you, that's my preference as well, so.
Okay. So just as far as the term limit, is there any objection to me? Well, actually, if we're, and that's what's in the, the current proposal, the two years? Okay, so I wouldn't need to make a modification.
No.
So just as far as the composition, if you could just collectively as a body, just give me direction on that, then I'll make whatever change you direct.
Are we to do that right now, or?
It would help, so that when I bring it back to you, it's in a form that is more closer to what you would actually adopt.
All right. You want to vote? How do we do that?
So, at this point, where you're asking for us as a board, us as a council, to make a motion that says, of the three options that are out there from GMA, which option we would like to adopt? And then we can kind of go forward with creating the ordinance the way that it needs to look, based on that option that we're looking at.
In addition to the default position.
Yeah, that's correct. So if anyone wants to make a motion, then you would have discussion on that motion and then vote. And if that motion passes, then that is the change that I would make to bring back to you for the next read.
Go ahead.
I motion to adopt Option C from GMA's guidelines as what we'd be using for the formation of the ethics board.
Yes, I'll second that motion.
And just for everybody's understanding, Option C is on page six.
Yeah. So Option C reads, "The Board of Ethics of the city shall be composed of three residents of the city to be appointed as follows. The mayor and council member shall each designate one qualified citizen from a pool of seven. Number of individuals who have consented to serve as a member of such Board of Ethics who will be available for a two-year period to be called upon to serve in the event of the Board of Ethics is appointed."
Mayor, I think it's prudent to continue the reading there for citizens.
Yep. "The city clerk shall maintain a listing of qualified citizens upon receipt of a properly verified complaint and timely forwarding of that complaint to the city official charged with the complaint. The mayor and council at the next regularly scheduled public meeting or at a specially called public meeting shall draw the names randomly from a listing of qualified citizens until three board members of the ethics board have been appointed. Such board will elect one of its members to serve as chair." Anyone have questions?
The only, the only discussion I have, or question I have, is we, is this something that we have to vote on the members of that seven?
No.
No.
Well, do we have to vote on who is that seven, so that we know that this is the seven that we're going to call on, on a regular basis?
Not tonight. That would come after you adopt the ordinance and get your certification, so that would be down the line.
You want to clarify your question? I know where you, I know what your question, you want to clarify it, please?
Yeah, the question is really, so I'm going to come with an appointee to the board, or to this commission. Commissioner Ock is going to do the same, we're all going to do the same. And do we have to agree that this person is qualified to handle any kind of ethics conversations that we might need to have? I could call, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be funny here, I could call my dog and say that Mr. Puggles is going to be on this commission. But is Mr. Puggles qualified to be on this commission, is the question.
So there is a list of qualifications for our board that's already in the ordinance, and by this Alternative C mentioned, that must be, meet the criteria, the qualifications as listed in the ordinance. So Mr. Puggles would not get the certification.
I don't know, he might, he might qualify.
There's eight, there's eight items there listed as qualifications, but to your question around voting, I think those members, or those potential members that go into the pool, I think, question was, are they, do we vote on those to add them to the pool?
No, so my understanding, the way this reads, is that you get to make that designation. So only three, let's see, let me read this again. It says, "Shall be composed of three residents to be appointed as follows. Shall each designate one to provide a pool of X. The clerk shall maintain a listing." Okay, so yeah, it would, you would each get to designate your individual, they would have to meet the requirements that Councilwoman Ock just referenced under the code, the proposed code, and then you would have a public meeting, it looks like, under this section, where you would draw names randomly. And then the three names that were drawn would constitute your board for that particular complaint.
So I need a little bit of clarification. Deborah, you said the motion was for seven?
It was for, it was for Option C.
Which is a pool of seven?
But Option C, are you reading from the charter?
Yeah, from the, no, from the GMA.
GMA, oh, okay.
If you look at page six, three, that's what we're talking about, and that's where the seven comes up.
There's still three. There's still three members. There's still three members, but the pool is going to be seven.
Understood, understood. Okay, got it.
So, and what is our timeline for creating this pool?
For creating the pool, it's, um, so technically, you don't have a deadline, but if you get a complaint, your timeline is ASAP, because you do need a board to adjudicate if you get a complaint. So I would just say I would move as reasonable and expeditiously as, as within your schedule, just so that you are prepared if a complaint is filed.
And one other question, does this, the types of complaints that we could receive, do those include open records requests and all those types of things that could fall under policing what it is that's going on?
No, so the open records requests complaints, the open records request has an entire section that governs complaints and the process to file complaints, and those would go off to the Superior Court. So this would strictly be, one of the provisions in here says that they have to cite the subsection in here that they are alleging that you have violated. So it would be confined to the ethics requirements that appear in this ordinance.
Perfect. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
And you also said that our charter is unique in that we identify seven members of this board, is that what you said?
Yes, that, that is correct. You're the only charter in Cobb County that does that.
Okay. And the other charters, well, I know you probably don't know definitively, but...
They were just more flexible. It says that the, the composition is as the council allows, so it didn't have that, this is your position, with the exception, is, you know, with the, with the law or the charter exception. There was just a greater level of flexibility.
Thank you.
I actually, between those options, there's another option there that actually allows or requires that one of the Board of Ethics members shall be in good standing with the Georgia bar, i.e. being an attorney. It, I, the option that we have on the table currently does not require one of the members of the Board of Ethics to be an attorney. And that, that's something that I feel pretty strongly about, ensuring that we have at least one member that's an attorney.
So is that something that we can pull into Alternative C?
You can definitely modify it to, and to put a requirement, but you would just have to, you know, kind of either mandate that a particular district nominates an attorney, or you would be kind of at a conundrum if, you know, you, everybody presented non-attorneys, and then you would have to pick amongst yourselves whose selection would be rejected to be replaced for an attorney. So I think the best practice is, if you are going to require an attorney, then just pick upfront, okay, who, whose selection would. Or you could make an eighth. I know that's, you know, making the, the board a little bit probably larger. Well, actually, no, because the eighth would still be random, so you wouldn't be guaranteed to get the attorney. You could appoint an attorney to represent the board.
We could make the mayor appoint you.
See, and, yeah, and Commissioner Ock just made a great statement. The mayor brought it up, so let's make the mayors. An attorney.
I have no problem with that. All right, so, so I'll ask, could we amend the motion to adopt Alternative C for the, for the ethics ordinance with the inclusion that the mayor's appointment shall be a appointee in good standing with the state bar of Georgia?
Yes, still be mayor, still be mayor.
And then that would be a friendly amendment, subject to Councilwoman Herndon agreeing to make that amendment, to her motion.
A quick question on how effective that would be if we still have to choose at random out of the seven people, including mayors.
Well, we would have to require that the mayor's appointment sits on the board, so you would pull two from the pool of randoms.
Okay, from the six, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, that's a good one.
All right, with that being said, we're going to vote on Alternative C, as mentioned before, with the inclusion of the mayor's appointee being in good standing of the state bar of Georgia. All those in favor, please say aye.
Well, actually, so just procedurally, Councilwoman Herndon would have to just approve the amendment, because it is her motion that we're modifying.
You start the motion.
Say that again?
So he's asking to amend your motion. You made the motion to adopt, to adopt C as is, and he's asking to amend it, to require that the mayor appoint an attorney, be required to appoint an attorney, and that that person sit along with the two random appointees who would be pulled at a subsequent council meeting publicly.
Okay. Is everyone signed that? Hi, are you?
I'm now confused somewhat.
So, yeah, let's, let's explain what it is we're talking about. We're going to have seven people that are going to be picked from the City of Mableton proper. The mayor's appointee will be a lawyer, somebody good with the state bar. We will then, anytime that any ethics conversation comes up, we will pick from the remaining seven, and tho, and two of those people would be present to hear or reside over any issue that comes about.
Right.
And that is the motion that we're putting on the floor.
Wouldn't it be the remaining, remaining six, right?
Remaining six, yes.
Yeah, right.
No, yeah, remaining six, yes, 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 yes. Sorry.
Yes, yes. This board would like you to appoint, and then two randoms from the pool.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I move to amend the motion to adopt...
You can say as stated. You can say as stated, if you don't want to, because we have it down-packed, and I'm sure you do, too, and you don't, okay.
And then... Do you need a second?
And I think she had a second.
I will second it if it's not second.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and then if you could just vote for approval.
To vote on the amended, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we'll move forward with the ethics ordinance as approved. Thank you all.
And, and just, just so I understand, so that was a first reading.
Yes.
Correct, and I will make that change, and then it will come back before you. And then if there's any other changes, just let me know, and I'll incorporate them, and then we'll come back before you for a final vote, so you'll have opportunity to review word for word whatever you finally adopt.
That's just first reading. All right, Madam Clerk, we ready to move to the next order?
Yes, we're, 10B, "Approval of Resolution Establishing the Ethics Principles for City Official Conduct."
So I think we all just witnessed the ethics ordinance coming into play. This here is the actual resolution that we are establishing, as mentioned before, that the GMA laid out as far as being part of the Georgia City of Ethics. Again, that is an important aspect to us, so hopefully everyone's read the resolution.
Is there any discussion?
A whole lot of discussion. So as you read through what we talked through with the Ethics Conflicts of Interest and Abuse of Office document that's set forth by GMA, and we correlate that to the different sections that are in the resolution. So line 29 through 33... So line 29 through 33, section 2 dot 8 dot 3B and 2 dot 8 dot 4N. One thing that I would like to incorporate is a, a comment that ensures constant and consistent transparency for this city, council, mayor, and in the future. Because we're making this for future councils, not just us. We have a great working relationship. We want to make sure that this continues as we go forward. So making comments in our resolution that say the mayor and mayor pro tem attend or at least have knowledge of all meetings with the county, that's huge. All council members and mayor have prior knowledge and offer to attend all meetings with state, county, and external entities to ensure that there is absolutely no issue that could come up. I'm trying to figure out, how do we incorporate that into our resolution and into the modus operandi that we kinda incorporate into this new city? That's a whole lot, I know.
Councilman, I don't know how that fits into the realm of ethics.
Well, and because when you look at line 29 through 33 and other, the other sections, it kinda talks to the idea of transparency, making sure that there are no ethical violations that we could run into, making sure that there are no situations that, um, that we need to be concerned with. And not saying that the mayor or any council member is going out and trying to broker deals outside of what we agree on, but ensuring that we all are in the same mindset that these are the things that we're going to accomplish and that we're trying to talk to when we go talk to the county, the state, and any other entity as it pertains to this city. We need to be very, very mindful that, I, you don't want me going out and having a conversation with finance folks and saying, hey, can you give me $50 to go deal with this? But the rest of the council has not heard that and is not on board with that. So my biggest concern is making sure that every time we go talk to the county, the state, any external entities, that the entire council is aware and is on board with that, with those conversations.
So to earn the GMA certified City of Ethics nation, uh, it says that we need to adopt five ethics principles, which are in this ordinance, but there also is a sixth one, I noticed that is added, that says create environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. So that kinda speaks to what already what you hope would be addressed in the ordinance.
I guess TJ, what I hear you saying is, is that any additional conversations outside of, I mean, obviously there's gonna be some level of transparency, because it states it here. But you mean as it relates to going out and talking to any other organizations? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I, I do not at any point want us as a council, to, as a city, to go out and make determinations for this city outside of what this council deems is appropriate. Does that make sense? And if we don't have the opportunity to have conversations or to hear the entire conversation, enemy, I, I'm a sales guy. So I know the number of times that I've gone into a room with the CIO and said, hey, we can do this. We can make this, these are the, these are the things that we're gonna put forward, these are the things we're gonna make happen. But if my engineer is not on board with that, then I go back to my engineer and my engineer says, that doesn't make sense. Right? So, so I'm trying to make sure that we put things into the document that says, anytime TJ goes, Councilman Ferguson goes and makes recommendations for the city, that he has consulted with his counterparts, the city council, to make sure that this is what we want to do.
But would that be something that we would include, like, in this ethics ordinance versus maybe something procedural as far as maybe the charter or something?
I think they're both. I think it's both. I think it's both ethics and it's procedural. We've gotta create procedure based on the ethics that we wish to move forward with. And if we don't have a procedure based on those ethics, then we're kinda just saying the ethics are there and then the procedure will follow later.
Yeah, well, to, to that, I would say, to, to use your example of going and talking to county or whoever it may be, we pass resolutions that explicitly state, and, and we vote and agree on as to what we are going to do in negotiations, whether it's through a purchasing agreement or whether it's through direct conversations. And so in every negotiation that we've had, every, we have a resolution that has authority, which we will get to hopefully in a few minutes, that will lay out the negotiations, the engagements that we need to have. I am, the, the possibility of us, and, and I understand clearly your, your discussion around transparency, but in the ordinance, it lays out very clearly what the, what would be seen as ethical violations. Right? And, and I wanna be very careful on, um, an ethical violation versus someone not being kept up to...
Yes, I agree.
To speed on something, right? Because this is, this is a higher level of, of being pertinent about the law. We're literally creating law with this ethics ord, uh, ethics ordinance. And I wanna be careful that a, a salesman promise doesn't turn into a lie, doesn't turn into, right, breaking the law as far as ethics. Again, I'll go back to our resolutions, which clearly define what we're being authorized to go do. So we go talk to the county about whatever we may go talk to them, there is authorization through a resolution that we've all passed and voted on that gives authorization for us to go do that.
I, I wholeheartedly agree. And at the end of the day, I'm more concerned about procedure versus an ethical halo that we are going to approve. And I'm just throwing it out there as something that we need to be constantly mindful of as we go and have conversations outside of the city council and outside of these meetings for the citizens of Mableton. So we're on the same page.
And keep in mind that the ethics talks about city officials, which not only includes us, but will include city staff as well.
True, well, city staff, all city staff, attorney, clerk.
And city manager.
Manager, but not all city staff.
So with that, any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the ethics resolution.
Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the resolution establishing ethics principles for city official conduct as it's stated.
Thank you, do you have a second?
A second.
All right. With that, we'll go to a vote. Vote for the approval of the ethics resolution, or the resolution establishing ethics principles for city official conduct. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We now have an approval for the resolution of establishing ethics principles for the city official conduct. Thank you.
The next item is approval of the resolution formally adopting a city legal organ. I, I can discuss this with you. All cities, all government bodies must post meetings by state law. And you are supposed to post in the legal organ or the paper that has the most distribution in your area. And that is the Marietta Daily Journal in Cobb County. So we are adopting that the, to meet the law, we definitely must put, post the meeting and let the Marietta Daily Journal know that we're having a meeting. It doesn't necessarily mean an ad, but we must notify that organ by state law. Of course, most cities believe in transparency. We will send to more entities, more like the Cobb Courier and other entities, and let them know of the meeting. But to meet the letter of the law, we have to establish the legal organ, and that would be the Marietta Daily Journal. So this resolution is formally adopting a city legal organ, which is the Marietta Daily Journal.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. And, and I will say that throughout the first two meetings, we have held to the law around that. We have notified the Marietta Daily Journal of our upcoming meetings. We've also made notifications, as Madam Clerk said, to the Cobb Courier, to AJC, and the Spotlight. So with that being said, any discussion? We're ready to move to the vote.
I make a motion to adopt the Marietta Daily Ja, Daily Journal as our legal organ, the city of Mableton.
I second.
I'd like to move to a vote, um, vote for the approval of the resolution formally adopting the city legal organ. All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. We now have approved the resolution formally adopting the city legal organ as the Marietta Daily Constitution, oh, it's Marietta Daily Journal. Mashin' them up.
The next item is approval of resolution providing for rules of procedure and decorum during the meetings.
So Mayor, Mayor, this is a standard resolution. It's typically, procedural rules are typically established for newer cities. Just in the meantime, until you have more formal and, you know, permanent rules through your, through your code that you'll establish. So basically here, it just says that, um, your meetings will be open to the public to the extent required by law, with the exception of executive session, that you'll have to have, um, four council members, including the mayor, to constitute a quorum, that the affirmative vote of a majority of the quorum is required for you to take any action on behalf of the city, that in the case of a tie, that the matter will be reconsidered at the next appropriate upcoming council meeting, unless it's withdrawn or a substitute motion is made, that no member of council shall engage in an extension, abstention, unless they give the official rea, reason of conflict that, um, why they're abstaining, that if a council member does not have a formal conflict of interest and they still abstain, then their vote will be considered to be in the affirmative of what the majority was on the question involved, that the mayor is the presiding officer, that the mayor pro tem is the backup essentially for the mayor when the mayor's absent or, um, just due to absence or any type of disability, that the city attorney shall be the parliamentarian. So that means that if you have a procedural issue, that I would give you guidance and then you would ultimately make the decision as to how you'll move forward, that the agenda will be prepared by the mayor, subject to approval by the council at the meeting, that the council can change the agenda at the meeting, um, that you'll have a consent agenda, that your consent agenda will be those items that, in the mayor's belief, there's not gonna be heavy disagreement on. And then those items are adopted just in one motion. And it kind of expedites the meeting and it prevents you from having to go through just the unnecessary discussion on just normal routine operational aspects. And if there's any council member who wants to pull something from the agenda, then it comes from the agenda. You don't have to have a second or a motion for that. If there's something on the consent agenda that you don't like and you would, uh, and you request that it go back on the regular agenda, you have the right as, uh, just members of the council to do that. You'll follow Roberts Rules of Order. And then if there's any conflict in Roberts Rules of Order between the charter or city policy, then of course the charter would trump and then city policy. Public comments, it's the same process that we've been following the meetings to date, and that's the two minutes for public comments, to provide your name, that the council has the ability to waive public comments. And that's essentially it, that if there's a public hearing, there'll be 10 minutes per side. And that, um, just members of the public and the councils are, and the council members and everyone involved in the meeting are just expected and requested to just exercise a certain level of decorum.
I motion approval of resolution providing for rules and procedure and decorum.
I second. All right, with that, any discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approval for the resolution providing the rules of procedure and decorum, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. We have approved the resolution providing for the rules and procedure and decorum.
The next item is 10E, that's approval of resolution authorizing banking and related financial activity. Attorney Walker Ashby will just describe.
Yes, so Mayor, Council, you could, uh, go outside of your, not the agenda packet, but the, behind the packet, there's, I've made some modifications to this one, so if you could look at the version that is behind your packet and it's titled, it still has the same title. It said, it's a resolution authorizing the opening of bank, city bank accounts and for other lawful purposes, but I've made some modifications. So my request would be to adopt this item as I've modified. And essentially what those modifications are, is that I have added that all expenditures, so, so essentially this item, just to give you background, this item says that the mayor and city-appointed city finance consultant are authorized to obtain the necessary tax identification numbers and to open such city bank accounts as may be needed by the city to conduct business. The mayor shall be designated as an authorized signatory for such accounts. Let's see, and shall be authorized to write checks and withdraw funds from the same. And then I have all expenditures and withdrawals from city accounts shall require advanced approval by the city council as may be, and you know what? I am not reading you the right one. So it's, it's everything I just said with the exception of, let me go to the version that you have where I made the change. Okay, here we go. Okay, so I have all expenditures and withdrawals, and this is the, the, the part that's been added. All expenditures and withdrawals from the city account shall require advance approval by the city council as may be authorized within adopted resolutions, budgets, ordinance, motions, and other formal authorizations of council. And so what that essentially means is that, um, like, for example, you've authorized expenditures for the city attorney, the city clerk, as well as the finance consultant. And we're anticipating in the near future, when you have revenue coming in, probably the immediate near future, to try to authorize expenditures for your participation at GMA. So there are documents and motions that you'll make to authorize expenditures, but this just says that there has to be some record of the council authorizing that expenditure before anyone can use funds for any expenditure. And then I've also added the last sentence, which says, in addition, city council authorize expenditures and withdrawals exceeding $5,000 shall require the approval of the mayor and, and city financial consultant. Now, I added city financial consultant, but you can make it another person if, if that's your, if that's your preference. I just put city financial consultant because they're aware of what your budget is and what the numbers are and, and the, the documents that you've approved or have not approved. But if you want to change that position, you can change that, that's your discretion. And that's essentially this, this item.
Can I get some clarification on what the thought processes around advanced approval? So if I say, uh, right now that I approve this, is that giving advanced approval? Or is it something that each time that we have this come up, we have a month, let's say, to give that advanced approval? And that constitutes staying within the letter of the law? Or is it some, is there some number that I need to be concerned with, with, in regards to advanced approval?
So your, your approvals are gonna be, they're gonna be, so this in itself doesn't give any approval for any expenditure other than it says that you have to have council approval. So there's nothing that this can be used as a basis of to say, you owe me money, but by any party. However, your approvals are gonna be broad and they're gonna be very specific. For example, you might, like, when you said it... very specific. For example, you might, like, when you set hourly rate, obviously, that's going to be a very specific approval. However, when you set your budget, you might categorize, let's just say like the GMA budget, you may categorize however much it costs, but it will be a broad expenditure. So it won't be specific because you won't know the amount until you actually make the actual steps. So, I mean, in essence, you just have to have a written authorization by the council. So if you approve a budget and you approve a budget and you say that, you know, the mayor and the city manager or the mayor and the finance director are authorized to spend $10,000 under the budget for this particular purpose and line item, then it would give them, that would give them the authorization to spend that money for that particular purpose. So it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. And sometimes that case-by-case basis, which is what your budget is, will include a broad category of allowable expenditures.
Which is why it says resolutions, budgets, ordinances, motions, and/or other formal authorizations by city council. So some can be very broad, some can be very specific.
I make a motion to approve this resolution.
I second.
Before we do that, is it possible to make a motion to add the word interim in there? Interim city financial consultant?
Ed, I'm sorry, say it again.
So I'm making a motion that we add the word interim because he's an interim city financial consultant.
So then are you then saying that once we come up with a, another option for our financial consulting, then we would then come back to this resolution?
We don't, why? Because we don't know definitively yet whether or not he's going to be a permanent finance consultant, so.
Let me ask this of our attorney. All of our resolutions have the authorization for a city attorney and clerk to make non-substantial changes. Would this be considered one?
No. So technically, that would be a substantial change. And that's only because it's kind of where Councilman was alluding to, that if we limit it to interim, it means that if you appoint someone else, we have to come back and get permission for that new appointee to do what the interim was able to do, because you've limited it to interim. So that's just something to consider. So you have the discretion to do that. So right now, as it reads, as long as they have been appointed as a city finance consultant, then the mayor can work with them. But if you limit it to interim, just keep in mind, he is only able to work with the interim under this authorization.
Well, we would only have an interim until we didn't. We wouldn't, I think we'd have an interim end someone else.
Well, to that point, we're going, we have a financial, interim financial consultant.
Right.
At some point, we will hire a financial manager, financial director of finance. So that will be a completely different title. So we would then have to come back anyway because we have a different title that we are going to be putting in this position. So to Councilman Jeffcoat's comment, really don't need to, but, I mean, we can throw that word in there. I'm asking the question. We can really throw that word in there, but at the end of the day, we're going to have to do it anyway.
That is correct. And hopefully, the goal is, we're using this just in the interim, like I'm going to continue the word interim. The goal is to actually put firm policies and procedures and procurement policies in place that actually establish these rules. So this is just a temporary form. So we can easily put interim in. It's your discretion. It would just require the maker of the motion to allow that amendment. And if not, then you would vote on the maker's motion. And then if that passed, this would be resolved. And if that failed, then Councilwoman Jeffcoat would be able to give her alternative motion.
Can you just amend your motion?
So I would like to amend my motion to add the word interim to this current resolution and then approve that resolution with the word interim for the financial consultant.
And I second.
No more discussion. We'd like to bring this to a vote. All in favor of a resolution authorizing the opening of city bank accounts and other lawful purposes, for other lawful purposes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing no opposition, Madam Clerk, the ayes have it. We now approve the resolution for authorizing the opening of bank accounts for other, bank accounts and for other lawful purposes.
The next item is Elf, approval of resolution providing notice to Cobb County of city's intent to collect certain taxes.
So Mayor and Council, this is also another one. It's in your agenda packet, but I've made a minor change to this one. So if you could look behind your agenda packet for the standalone version of this that's stapled behind your agenda packet, and it's, again, it's the same title. It's called a resolution providing notice to Cobb County. So just to tell you what this is generally, this is where, so pursuant to your charter, you would give a 30-day notice to Cobb County as to the date that you intend to collect certain taxes. And obviously, I'm sure that you, you're familiar and you've looked at the feasibility study that was done by the Carl Vin, Carl Vin Institute, I mean Carl Vincent Institute. And of that list of taxes, these are the ones that would not require substantial personnel, personnel activity. So these are the ones that I've suggested that at a minimum, you give the county notice of your intent to collect. And that would be the hotel motel taxes, the insurance premium taxes, franchise fees, motor vehicle taxes, and financial institution tax. Now, we have requested a meeting. The mayor sent an email to the county tax commissioner as well as the county manager, and we've copied the county district representative for Mableton, just to request to meet. And so far, it's been a great level of communication. The county has been immediately engaged. They've responded and they've communicated that next week will, looks like it's going to be a very open week for them to meet. I know the tax commissioner was actually leaving for the, a good portion of this week, so she just didn't have any availability this week to meet. But we're anticipating, based on the positive response from the county that the mayor received upon his communication, that we will engage more further with the county on these discussions. Now, if you authorize this tonight, I will send a notice to county tomorrow, just telling them that this is your intent to collect these. And what I've done is I've added a provision in here. So one, at the very, item B, it says that it's providing notice just to financial institutions and utility providers. Look, where the city's going to start collecting these effective as of this date. So just to put them on notice. And then it also says that naturally, this is not the exhaustive list of taxes that the city will collect, but this is just, at this point, these are the ones that we're requesting the revenue to be transferred to the city. And, because, you know, you'll have other taxes and fees, but I just don't think at this point, like, for example, parks and recreation, there's substantial fees that come from that, but it's just, it's probably not realistic at this point that you would be able to collect those fees because there's just a lot of personnel processes that are required. It's a lot of collaboration that's going to be necessary with the county with respect to the transition of any park property that you request to be transitioned over to the city. So you're just really not at a point feasibly to operate a park system. So that's naturally why I did not include these here. I mean, those type fees here. It's the same with, with permits, building permits and inspection. You just don't have the staff capacity. You don't have the operational capacity. And you don't have the contractual agreements in place because you're still so brand new to be able to have people to make those operations. But we do intend to have those discussions with the county and to see what the county's preferences are and to bring those recommendations back to you at your next meeting. And then ultimately, those recommendations will be put in the form of an agreement that we will ask you, as well as the county, to adopt as far as just temporarily moving forward. But the change that I also put here is Section 2, it says, "The mayor shall be authorized to approve and provide written notice to the county of an alternate commencement date for these tax collections, as long as that date doesn't go beyond July 5th." And the reason I added this is because when we meet with the county next week, they may ask for concessions or there may be a level of negotiation or just, you know, just a level of discussion that the mayor may say, okay, well, you know what? It makes logical sense to put it off or make it sooner. They may agree to make the date sooner. They may agree to make the date a little bit further. So it just makes logical sense that if they'll move the date up sooner, or if they have a good valid reason for wanting to move the date back a little bit, that the mayor had that flexibility to not be set in stone to say, I can only authorize for June 1st or July 1st. So I've just added that to give him just a little bit more flexibility when he negotiates with the county.
Thank you for that, Madam Attorney. I think the reality is, we are, we're sitting here and it is May 25th. We're talking about a June, June 1st date, so with a holiday right in between. So as much as we would like to move forward as quickly as we can, we do have to understand that there's multiple parties involved and multiple different schedules to kind of coordinate. So providing a fallback date, if you will, or range back to July 5th is obviously preferable because it allows us that flexibility. I, to echo what the attorney said, the county has been more than communicative about wanting to meet with us, getting the timelines. I actually did hear directly from the tax commissioner, directly, about being able to move forward and specifically around some of the items, including the motor vehicle tax. And again, as the attorney mentioned, these items will ultimately allow us to be able to start receiving funds as quickly as possible. That is the goal with this. That is why those five areas of taxes were chosen, because it allows us the opportunity to be able to potentially be able to get those taxes without having to build infrastructure and staff with amongst the city to be able to retain those. So with that said, I think there's one other area there which is relates to the utility providers. As many people know, as franchise fees, as we have had discussions with, I want to say, each, each one of these providers in the city to at least, or that provide services to the city, to at least begin having discussions about what it would take for them to be able to provide, or forced to commence the calculation or collection of those franchise fees. The date for that is July 1st is what we're putting on. And again, that is, as it's been explained to me, that is not an automatic collection of fees. That will take a while. I wasn't given a date. I think we can work through that. But just for the purposes of tonight's meeting, the date that we're providing them is July 1st, which we're making a request for. So with that said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution providing the notice.
Before we do that, just one question I have. There's a footnote that is on Section 1 with that June 1st date, which references a June 26th date at the bottom. Can you explain what that is?
Yes. You know, I literally just had this document.
Yeah, so while you're finding it, I'll read it. So.
Oh, here it goes. I have it.
Notice to Cobb County, the city council hereby provides notice to Cobb County, Georgia, that effective as of June 1st, 2023, the city will collect the following taxes, fees, assessments, fines, and forfeitures and/or monies within a territorial limits of the City of Mableton. The footnote goes and talks about all that stuff. And then it then says, "The city hereby provides alternative notice that the city's collection of hotel motel taxes, insurance premium, franchise fees, avalore, and financial shall instead commence on June 26th."
So this one, so we have to give the county 30 days notice. So as part of the mayor's negotiations with the county, if they're agreeable to certain fees and assessments coming earlier, just for purposes of your immediate expenses, then the mayor would have the ability to negotiate and accept that earlier date. And if they're not agreeable, then you can pick the date as long as it's 30-day notice, which would mean that the earliest date that you could mandate those fees would be 30 days from the date of adoption at least. So that's assuming that that would give me one day. So tomorrow, I would have to get the notice out. And I'm planning to do it. I plan to have it walked in, certified, emailed. So I'm going to do it every way possible. But that would start the accrual. So just legally, they would have to give it to you by that 30-day, that 30th day. But who knows? I mean, they may, in good faith, negotiate, you know, with the mayor. We'll just see when we meet with them, if they're agreeable to pushing the deadline up a little bit, just to give you more flexibility with those immediate expenses.
This gives us the ability to receive funds in the absolute first day possible, which will be June 26th. It's not the first date that the county will be obligated to because of 30-day required notice. And I'm not going to put the county on the hook for that either. But I will say that in initial discussions, they have been, they've said they've been preparing. So in the extent that they have, we want to be able to take advantage of the opportunity to receive funds as soon as possible.
Any other discussion?
Any adverse implications of receiving those funds sooner than the June 26th date?
Any.
Adverse implications, like any?
No, not that I know of.
No, it would just be the county's discretion. And I guess we'll, and the county manager may not know when we meet, but it would at least give her the opportunity to bring that and have that roundtable discussion with the board and just to give them the opportunity to give their feedback on the issue.
Any remaining discussion? Councilman?
I think there's still not enough clarity for one of my council members.
Yeah, just call me out. So I'm just going to make sure that I'm clear. Section 1 speaks to a June 1st date, which would have meant that we would have given them notice on May 1st. Because we've not given them notice on May 1st, this June 1st date is pretty much null and void. We're then talking about this June 26th date, which is 30 days from tomorrow. Is that correct?
Well, I'm not going to say it's null and void. I'm going to say it's a wish list. It's a request, a desire. But as far as the county being obligated, they are not obligated to commit to that date.
So in essence, what date are they obligated to?
June 26th.
June 26th.
30 days from notice.
Okay.
As I led in with, today's the 25th. We don't really want to walk in and say, you need to give us funds on the 1st.
But they could very well make the concession and give us the funds on June 1st, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And they may say the 15th, they may say the 20th, or they may say no, just it's the 30th date. But we'll find that out when we engage in those discussions.
Wonderful. You got to talk to me like I'm a third grader some days.
Anything else?
I make a motion to approve this resolution providing notice to Cobb County of the city's intent to collect certain taxes, fees, assessment, fines, and forfeitures and/or monies and other, and for other lawful purposes.
I second.
With the motion being made and seconded, I'd like to move that we make a vote on this resolution as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. We have approved the resolution providing notice to Cobb County of the city's intent to collect certain taxes, fees, assessment, fines, and forfeitures, and/or other monies, and for other lawful purposes.
We're down to TNG, approval of resolution authorizing the negotiation of franchise agreements.
Yes, and Mayor and Council, so now that you've adopted the resolution that's provided notice of your intent to collect these fees, we now, there's certain franchises that we need to get agreements in place with. So this will just give the mayor, myself, the financial consultant, the authorization to make these negotiations with the franchises and to bring these documents back to you for your approval.
Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Hearing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Are you asking for a motion to wait and second it?
No.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
I'll pan, I'll adopt. No, it was.
I made the motion, someone over here.
Having a motion being made, I'd like to move that we vote on the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, we officially approve the resolution authorizing.
TNH, approval of resolution authorizing city to secure bids for tax anticipation note.
So Mayor and Counsel, this resolution would authorize just the city's finance team, team and a underwriter to, and actually, you know what, this is another one that I've made a slight modification to, so if you can go to the back of the agenda packet, and it will include the modification that I made, and I'll tell you what that is, but just in general, this resolution authorizes the mayor, the city finance team, myself, to just, which is primarily going to be the city's finance team, I don't think the mayor and myself are going to do much on this, but what they would do is they would go out and secure bids, they would secure bid terms, just the, the proposals as far as to give you a tax anticipation note. Now, I will say, the last three cities to incorporate all did tax anticipation notes. And the tax anticipation note, I mean, it, it's a loan, but it's a temporary loan, and it's not to live off of any debt, it's, it's, so you don't have a cash problem, you have a cash flow problem. So you have money that's coming in, I mean, these, these funds are being paid, they are in a bank account, they are in a pool, they are available for the citizens' use and benefit, it's just that you don't have access to those funds yet. So this just gives you the ability to have flexibility on your very immediate needs until that revenue comes in, and then once that revenue comes in, you would immediately pay off the loan. So it's not intended to be any type of long-term debt. And your charter actually says that you would have to pay this off by the end of the year. So you wouldn't be able to, so there would be a level of fiscal responsibility that you would have to engage in, just to make sure that whatever amount you borrow would be covered by anticipated revenues, and that it also wouldn't exceed what is, my recommendation would be what is just minimally fiscally necessary to carry out the functions and the expectations of you of the public. So if, if, oh, and then the addition that I made is there is a footnote that I've added, footnote one, and it says, it's just providing clarity that this resolution shall authorize the securing of bids, proposals, terms, and conditions, but shall not authorize the issuance or approval of any loan, so that's just so it's clear to everyone that you're not authorizing a loan, you're strictly just going out and getting bid information and bringing that back to the council. And then I just reiterated again, I said, "All loans shall be subject to subsequent approval by the city council." And then I put, "In addition, the mayor, as long as no cost is involved, may use additional outside financial experts to secure loan bids." We do have the person, the person who's listed now is Ed Wall, and I know him personally, and he also has been the underwriter for the last three cities to incorporate, and there's no fee charged with him securing bids. There would be a fee charged assessed if you use him, if you decide to use him, but it's, there's no fee charged with securing bids. But this just gives the mayor the flexibility to use Ed Wall or someone else. So it wouldn't slow the process if he decided not to use Ed Wall, where he would have to come back to you and ask you for authorization to use someone else, he would just, so if you had a recommendation, or if the bids that we were getting back, just, you know, you asked the mayor just informally, "How is the bid process going?", and you felt maybe, "Okay, I know someone who may able, who may be, who may be able to compete, or who may be able to offer to bring in more bids," it would just give the mayor that flexibility to use other people, as long as there is no cost associated, similar to, there would be no cost initially from Ed Wall.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. I think this also lays out that we have at least three banks, that we, that we secure bids for at least three banks.
That's correct, there is that requirement in here that you at least go to three banks to bring back proposals.
Specifically that are doing business in Georgia.
That are doing business in Georgia, yes. Preferably Cobb County.
Correct.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll move to adopt the resolution authorizing tax anticipation notes and bids for other lawful purposes.
I'll second that.
Having a motion and a second, I would like to move to vote on a resolution authorizing tax anticipation notes and bids for other lawful purposes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I oppose.
Madam Clerk, note, having six ayes and one, one opposed, Councilwoman Ock. The ayes have it, we are moving forward to adopt the resolution authorizing tax anticipation note bids and for other lawful purposes. Thank you.
At this time, according to the order of the agenda, there could be an executive session, and I would need a motion if we are doing an executive session. And then after the, if there is one afterwards, we discuss the other items, the comments when we come back.
So my recommendation would be just for definitely litigation, if you're inclined, because I do have a litigation update, but also real estate and personnel, not particularly because I have a topic, but I know those topics typically come up with most councils during executive session, and if you include that in the motion, it allows the conversation to resume.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss litigation, personnel, and real estate.
I'd like to second that motion. Second that motion.
So let's go ahead and vote to go into executive session for the, for the item stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, we will now move into executive session. I'd like to entertain a motion to close our executive session.
I'll second the motion.
Or make the motion.
Or I'll make the motion, my apologies.
Second.
And Jeff Cook? Yeah, so all those in favor of closing executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, we have effectively closed our executive session, and we can move on into agenda, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have the city attorney's comments. I don't know what you mean by discussion non-applicable, nothing. Is that just?
Yeah, there were no discussions.
No discussion. Okay, city attorney comments?
I have, I have nothing further, other than I have a signature page for your resolution adopting GMA's ethics principles that I'm going to hand to councilmen, and if you can just sign it while you're still there, and it will limit the time afterwards that we would need to have everyone here.
City clerk has no comments, and now city council comments.
Let's start with Councilwoman Davis.
I have no comments at this time.
I have no comments, we just wanted to thank you all for hanging out here while we have our executive session. Really happy to see your faces. As I was saying, thank you so much for sticking with us, we appreciate it. And we motion to have snacks in the executive session next time.
Oh, here, yes, here, here, I agree with that.
Councilwoman Ock?
No comments.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
I, I can't not say anything, but National Military Appreciation Month, thank you all, service members, for your service. Thank you for the families of service members, the recognitions for our high school valedictorians, salutatorians. It's such a warming feeling to know that this is the generation that's going to push us forward, and that we're doing all this for. So I continuously am going to thank them, and thank this council. Thank you for staying, and I'm shutting up now.
All right, mine's short and sweet, I am just in awe at you all's dedication, thank you so much for staying this late at night, and that's it, that's all my comment.
I, I will, I will echo the sentiments of the colleagues here. Thank you all for, for staying, it's diligent work that we're doing, it's very important work, it's work that we do on behalf of all of you, and so to show your commitment to staying here, I definitely do appreciate it. I will, I will make one note that, you know, there, there are things that we are going to accomplish in this city, great things that we're going to accomplish. Right now, I'll still say, we are, we are still in the midst of our transition phase and our transition efforts, as you see here with the work that we're doing. This was brought up after the last meeting, so I want to say this publicly, what you see here with us in the council through these special meetings is, is raw, almost, it's to all of you guys, right? What you see is real life that's happening. Us coming together and making decisions as a body is in front of all of you. We, we haven't had work sessions, we haven't had private retreats, what you see here is what's happening. So, so there may be discussion about things may not be going as smoothly, or there may be a lot of questions, but that is to the due diligence of every single council member and myself that you see up here, wanting to make sure we get things right. So we're, we're not in the entrance of just rushing through and speeding through things, we're taking extra time with our clerk and our attorney to ensure that you guys know that what we're deliberating, what we're introducing, and ultimately what we're voting on. So I did want to make, make note of that. And to those who, who think we all have an S. under our shirts, we're, guys, we're just like you guys, you know? And there are certain things that, that the city can do, and certain things that the city can't do. So when people are making requests and being specific about things that we should be doing, there are municipal laws that we operate under, so I want to make sure that we're doing what we can, we'll continue to do what we can, and just end by saying, "We, we serve you, we're delighted to serve you, I'm delighted to serve you." Thank you all. With that, unless there is discussion or anything else, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, slow down, slow down. Slow down. One at a time, please. You ready? All right.
I second that.
Thank you.
So we had Councilwoman Ock, I think, and Councilwoman Jeff Cook? I, I. Okay, you second it, okay. All right, with, all in favor of adjourned in the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned, thank you all.